North Country Community Health Board, that's in the HRCC. I'm closest.
Yeah.
The Emergency Communication Board, now I'm closer than David is, but I don't know anything that they're talking about.
Yeah.
Dancing in the sky, one way up in Monomah coming up.
Okay. That's for me, that's straight west.
Okay.
Just to let you know, Karen Tim called me yesterday, she sent you the comments for the work session on, you know.
Oh, yep, saw that.
They had to go back home, otherwise she was gonna be here and though she knew she couldn't talk, so she's gonna listen, just passing that on through.
I like, you know, and like I say, when I first got on, I knew all this stuff was available.
Oh, yeah?
You know, and then when they talk about, for people that are sixty and older.
Are you ready, Jeff? Okay.
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
Commissioner from Bev- Terni County was on there with me, and he said, "People who are sixty and older," he says, "That's not very old." And I was sixty, so I said, "Thank you, great." And like I've always said, how do people find out about what's available? Either my mom, I gave my sister the Senior Linkage Line phone number, I said, "These people are there to help." She's reached out to them a couple of times, so.
I'm thinking we're good.
Okay, all right, let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Jeff, do you want to explain the agenda? We're gonna switch some things around, please.
Sure, Madam Chair, we have legislative updates, and we have an opportunity to have Representative Green and I believe Representative Knutson joining us. But they're on a short timeframe, so we're gonna move that item up to the start and start with legislative updates from their perspective.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Steve, thanks for joining us. Oh, you're on mute.
Thanks for having me.
And Chris does not on yet.
I haven't seen her yet.
Okay. Dave, do you want to lead the discussion on this, or?
Well, first bill, I think Steve's only got to about nine thirty, and then he has to leave, so I know one of the bills we have on here to look at is that White Earth Land Bill. Steve, if you want to just kind of give the board a brief overview of what's happened?
Well, I'm assuming, first of all, everybody's aware of the bill on West Enix, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Right now, I should have acted faster, I, they had guaranteed me it was gonna go to a vote in committee, and I had the votes to stop it in committee. And then, even though I should have expected it, I didn't, they tabled the bill. And so what that means is that they're gonna twist some arms in committee and try to get the people that were gonna vote with me to flip, and get it voted out of committee, and you know how that goes, if a bill is tabled, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. So all they have to do is say, "I vote to take this off the table, vote on it, and then it can move forward." If that happens, it has a couple more stops, the state government is one of them, and I think maybe judicial, but I'm not positive on that. The bill was very bad for everybody concerned, I just got another email in favor of it today, I think that puts me at seven, and I've gotten hundreds opposed. And that's for both tribal members and non-tribal members. You know, we have members that own businesses in that area that are afraid that they would, well, they would, they would essentially go broke if this land was cut off. There's been claims that they will leave it open, and I'm not gonna call them liars and say they won't, that would be wrong, but they don't have to abide by the law. They're a sovereign nation, and if they decide to close it, they can at any time, and they have in the past. You know, I've had people sending me pictures saying, "This is White Earth land, and no non-member can be on here, or you'll be prosecuted on federal law." So that's the deal on it. We need, so far, every Republican has said that they will stick with me, I've asked them numerous times, and if they, that if they are going to vote for it, to please let me know, so that I can work on it. I have Grant Housechild has said he would vote no, he's a Democrat, and as has Rob Kupac publicly stated, that he would be a strong no on the bill. If we can maintain that, I think the bill will die this year, and, but I would never underestimate the ability of these folks to put it in some other way. Other than that, I mean, that's kind of the long story on it, I'll answer any questions about it.
So Steve, even if, even if the bill codified the part that they would continue to allow the use of the land for recreational purposes and hunting, et cetera, that would mean nothing because they're a sovereign nation, as you stated?
Right, right, because what are you gonna do? I mean, if another entity did that, you'd have the option to go back and pass another bill to take that land back. Now, I suppose that would be an option, but what do you suppose the chances of that happening are? And once they get it, and it goes into federal trust, that's it, they can, even if the current council would agree to that, I mean, April 2nd, there's another election, and that changes up the chairman. And if you follow tribal government at all, it changes on a regular basis. And so, it's, but you know, the part about, I gotta get something to drink, excuse me, the part about it not being able to access is only, only a small part of the issue. The other issue is the, you know, what's the, and the access to the private lands, but what about the property tax base? What happens with that? The local businesses, you know, how will they be hurt? And what, and what advantage is there to the tribe? And then we also, and it was brought up, but I'll bring it up again if it comes up, that in nineteen eighty, they settled all the clouded titles on White Earth. The tribe got ten thousand acres back, and a settlement of six point six million dollars. And I want to make it clear to you guys, I'm not against the tribe, I just don't think this is a good deal for anyone. And that six point six million dollars based, pretty much got them their casino, which they have a good revenue coming in from. So, in nineteen eighty-six, I was around then, and even though I was never a fan of the casino, it's brought in a lot of money, and it was an extremely good deal for White Earth.
Steve, this is Shar, so, let's say that this passes, then, do you see the people that brought this bill forth going to other lands in Minnesota?
Oh, I think they already are. Red Lake is trying to get Upper Red Lake back, that's a federal deal. The White Earth is also trying to get the Tamrac Forest, which is right next to the White Earth Forest, they're working on that as we speak on a federal level. But, you know, stay in contact with Congresswoman Fishbach and Congressman Stover on those. I don't know how much value you'll get out of Klobuchar and Smith, but it never hurts to let them know on those issues. And I don't really know how much of Hubbard County this land affects, but it could certainly affect tourism.
You know, it doesn't probably affect a lot of land in Hubbard County per se, but it's a good portion of our economy.
Right.
A lot of people from this area recreate up there, winter and summer.
Right. And the other issue, too, is if they did close it off, and I've tried to make this point, and obviously I'm getting through, because I'm not getting hardly anybody that's opposed to my view, is that, you know, White Earth is very diverse, I mean, I mean, look at me, I'm a member, but none of my kids are, and that's kind of the norm here. And so you'd be, you'd have moms or dads able to access land and kids not able to, or at least descendants not able to into the future. And then what happens to it? So.
Also in the bill that's concerning is, you know, that it requires the formation of that task force, and that task force, you know, seven members of that task force are appointed by the commissioner. Well, we all know how it's gonna go, then.
Yeah, and the commissioner, and then tribal community, or the tribal government appoints as well, I believe. But that's, that's just a technicality, because the task force that they're putting up will move forward with the school trust and the tax forfeited lands that are within the boundaries of the reservation. So the first part of the bill is talking about excluding the tax forfeited lands that the county manages and the school trust. The second half of the bill says you're gonna put up a task force and figure out how to move forward to get those lands as well. So it's all part of the same bill.
I look, I look at it from the standpoint of how, I don't see where it benefits tribal members or any other citizen, for that matter. When you look at potential economic damage, property issues, property taxes, timber management, all of that is concerning.
What's driving these legislators that are pushing for this? I mean, what's the reason behind it?
Well, I'll solicit conspiracy theorists again, but this is a movement, and if you ask me, I'll tell you, I think the tribes are being used in this. This is a movement to just eliminate private ownership of land. And, and you'll see that as you move forward, it'll become more and more clear as the years go by, if it's not yet. And this is one avenue for them to get the county tax forfeited lands into a position where no one can ever access them again. And that's what this will do. The, you know, you talk about the benefits to the tribe, if this goes away, and I did state this in my, in my comments, this affects our property taxes on a local level, and in Monomah especially, we are, we're not, I don't know how long, much longer our hospital could stay open as it is, without some help. They want to get a grant to build a new hospital, but they don't, even the reports that we got coming back saying they might be viable for two more years if they get that, but then they're right back where they were in staffing and expenses. But, but these things are crucial, and that's why it's not just this that I'm fighting. I've been fighting against the public lands continuing to grow for a very long time, and this is one reason. And, and like I said, that, you know, the, as time goes by, it is by twenty forty, no, excuse me, twenty sixty, that it's statistically, they're saying there won't be any more full-blood Indians left in the state. And within seventy-six years, the turn of the century, actually seventy-five years, because I think it was two thousand ninety-eight, if I'm not mistaken, there will likely be well under ten thousand total enrollees in the state. So, the nation as a whole is disappearing, and what happens to the land after that? Well, it goes back to the federal government.
So, and the testimony down at the, during the hearing, would you say, I mean, I watched parts of that, it seemed overwhelmingly not in favor of this bill. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, there's very few people in favor of the bill. The tribal council is, at the meeting in Detroit Lakes where Kupac held a town hall meeting, I guess, one of the tribal council went in there to try to disrupt the meeting, and they pretty much ran him on on a rail. I don't think they were very respectful to him, but as it sounds, they probably, he wasn't very respectful to them either. And people are angry, and I think that's why Kupac agreed to be a hard no. But I've been telling folks to make sure you email him and thank him, because I know for a fact, I've watched it, he's under tremendous pressure to change his mind on that down here. And, you know, Shar, you asked about who's driving this? It's Senator Kunish, she's from New Brighton, I believe, I believe it is, and she has no dog in this fight. She has ancestral background with the Native Americans, she is a descendant, but she's from South Dakota. And apparently she's just decided she's gonna be the savior, but causing a lot of problems for us, I know that.
Steve, does it do, does it carry any weight if we pass a resolution opposing this as a county?
I think it does. It will not make a difference with Kunish, but it most certainly may with other legislators. Whether, you know, even, whether they are in the area or not, if the counties come together on this, I mean, they do pay attention, and the worst thing that could happen is if folks remain silent. So, and I think, I think we're seeing good, good response to this. I hope it doesn't wane in the next couple of months. We have a couple more weeks to get through deadlines, or maybe a little over a week, I don't know for sure now. But if we get past the deadlines, then theoretically, if it hasn't made it through committees in the House and Senate, it's dead for the year. But I always tell people, don't underestimate the power of someone who wants to get something passed, because they can easily roll it into another bill or bring it up on the floor. So we have to remain vigilant on it all the way through until we sign E.D.I.
I'm gonna ask Steve on another bill, do you guys have any more comments on this one?
No.
No. Good morning, Steve, this is Ted Van Kempin. I just want to thank you for, for coming here this morning and talking about this. You did bring up a point about the property taxes and stuff. In my district up in Farden Township, the Castle Lake School District is, is part of that township, and they passed a school bonding, and it sounds like a lot of the people up in my district there in Farden Township, their property taxes skyrocketed because of the school referendum for Castle Lake Schools. And of course, you probably already figured it out, that not everybody in the Castle Lake School District pays property taxes, so it goes on to those then that are left remaining to pay that tax. And I could see now that you brought that up, I could see that happening there in, on White Earth, where who's gonna pay the property taxes if there isn't any private properties?
Well, and this is bringing it to light, and I, I tried not to be the me, me, me guy, and I apologize if that's what this sounds like, but I've been ringing this bell for over ten years, and I saw this coming, and the reason it's brought forward right now is because of the White Earth, such a large taking. Now, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand acres, but I think the tribe does own about forty thousand of them now. So, or manage them at least, but that still leaves a great deal out there that's from, that's in the state, and the state pays pilt, and federal government will not, and the rest is private, and I think it's thirty, close to thirty-five thousand privately owned. And like I said, a lot of those are tribal members, and so, yeah, if this, if this state land goes, and this tax forfeited land goes, the taxes will have to go up, if you're gonna maintain.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to see us get, get a copy of the Becker County Resolution and bring forward a resolution to the next meeting on this bill.
Would that be board consensus?
Yes.
All right, Jeff, would you do that, please?
Yep.
Can we switch to another bill? Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, Steve, I'm looking for the Senate number, and I can't find it here, but the Senate polled the bill on the Human Rights Act.
Forty twenty-one.
Forty twenty-one, okay, forty twenty-one, can you give us an update on that?
Forty twenty-one, I'm trying to think of what that one is, I don't have that in front of me.
That's the House file.
That's the House file, okay, so the...
Senate file is forty-two ninety-two.
Thank you, forty, Senate file.
Okay, that's, that's the housing one, then, that's where they want to...
No, actually, I want you to talk about the human rights one. Are there, so they were exempting religious freedom?
Oh, okay, you're talking about the ERA type one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna bring that forward in a constitutional amendment, they want to get a vote on that. I don't know if they've got the votes to get that on the ballot, if they do, we're gonna have to really fight that. That's, it has to do with the gender identity.
Yep.
And becoming hu, within the human rights. Yeah, it's bad.
And then not excluding religion.
I mean, it was bad in the last year, and they, yeah, 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 they, yeah, they did, they took out all religion. So you can be, you can't be discriminated against if, if you are a pedophile, but you can if you claim Christianity, and, or any other religion, I should put that. When questioned on that, the author of the bill said, "Well, that's covered under the word creed," but it's, it's a stretch. So, yeah, I don't, I, I'm hoping that there's enough Democrats that would not vote for that, but there again, we need a lot of public pressure on that one as well.
Do you know...
And their cover is gonna be, "Well, we're just putting it on the ballot for people to choose."
So, do you think they pulled it because of public pressure, or do you have any idea why it was pulled?
Well, I don't think they have the votes right now, they don't want to bring it out there and have it fail.
Okay.
The same reason they tabled the White Earth bill, they, as long as it's pulled, it's, it's still alive, and they can continue to put pressure on members to get them to flip on it.
Okay. Are there any other bills you want to talk to Steve on?
Probably the deer management.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Yes, morning again, Steve, yeah, it looks like the deer management one, Senate File three-nine-eight-eight, the first paragraph, it talks about wolf management, and we just had a group here last week, and they're on the agenda for next week, if you could speak to that at all.
Okay, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different bills out there concerning wolves, and I think that this, this says deer management, and I believe that, and maybe it's a smart thing, I believe that that was put in there so that it would take the term wolf off the front, so that maybe they could gain a little support. I don't think the bill is gonna do too much, it, if I remember it, I read it a little while ago, I think it just says that if and when the wolf is delisted on a federal level, then, then they can, then they can have a wolf hunt.
Yes, yes.
And the deer portion of it, like I said, I believe that's just there to divert attention.
Thank you.
The other bill that we should discuss a little bit is the building code one. I don't, not sure what the Senate file is on that one.
I think that's forty-two ninety-two.
Okay.
That, that's where the municipalities are gonna have to, or they're not gonna be exempt anymore from some of the different building codes, and I think in that bill, if I remember right it all, so, I should have had it printed off in front of me, I apologize, I think that one also allows for criminal and civil action to be taken if someone can prove discrimination. Fines up to twenty-five thousand dollars, and then forcing you to rent to whoever wants to rent, is that the one you're talking about?
Well, and, and we're more concerned, I think, about the fact that we'd have to adopt a county-wide ordinance, and then we'd have to have inspectors, building code inspectors, and it would add a big expense to anybody wanting to build in the rural, rural area.
Right, yeah.
And a big expense to the county to manage.
Yeah, it would. And then, and...
Housing is already unaffordable.
And then with the language that's there, yeah, I think with the language that's, that's there, maybe it was existing or whatever, when they added it in, but with every permit, then you'd need the inspection, correct?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, our ears...
So I don't support any of those bills, but the deer one I might, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's hard for me to vote on that, vote yes on that, just because I think it's a, it's a scam, but it's something as far as the wolf goes, but, yeah, I don't, I don't support the, the housing one either, that...
You know, and I guess I would come on the building code, you know, nobody's against, you know, building, making sure homes are safe and built to certain standards, but the problem with it is just like everything else that tends, if you tend to over-regulate too much, you, you get less of what you probably want. We have a housing shortage, we have a housing problem, if you make it prohibitively more expensive than it already is, are we actually doing more harm than good? And that's, that's what worries me, I mean, it's gonna cost the county a lot of money to manage it, it'll cost people a lot of extra money, it'll slow the whole process down. I'm just not sure, well, number one, if it's a good time to be doing it, if you were gonna pick a time where you would adopt something like that, now would not be the time to do that.
So I have one more bill, the early childcare one, which makes it voluntary at this point for childcare providers to record and have access, and they can in their own setting require a child two months or older to be vaccinated.
Right.
So, I've talked to people that have been in childcare, and they, and the reason they've quit is because of regulations.
Yeah.
And so I see this as the first step of making this mandatory. First of all, I have a problem, because I think it'll disrupt childcare from either end, from the working parent or the caregiver. And secondly, we had a child that could not handle vaccinations early on, and by the age of two, if you follow the government standards, a child at the age of two has received seventy vaccines. So can you tell me what the flavor of the level is for this bill at the state?
On this bill, too, it's been around a long time, it's number six-ten. And so I'm thinking that there's enough pushback, but there again, never underestimate these people. It's, you know, we're up to over four thousand bills now, and this one is six-ten, so it's been out there since early last year. There's, there's a lot of pushback out of it for obvious reasons. I think you're absolutely right, that it's, it's gonna be mandatory. I think, I think if I read the bill right, it pretty much already is, and it's another attempt, I believe, to set up state-run daycares. And, and I, and I know that that's the fact, even though it's another conspiracy guy, Rod Skoye was doing that kind of stuff when he was in office, and, and his plan was to get money for the, for the elementary schools so that they could have daycare in there, they were gonna change the kindergarten to be four years old instead of five. So you'd bring your kids in at four for kindergarten, but there would also be places in the school from one to three where people could drop off their kids. And, and then demand, the vaccine mandates, I mean, you can, you can decide for yourself why they want to push them, but the whole thing is designed to drive out the private daycare.
Thank you. Well, Steve just has to go here in a couple minutes, do any of you have anything else you want to ask him or comments?
Madam Chair, there, there are two items that are gonna have a significant impact on our levy, if we're not, if we're not watching them.
Okay.
One of them is the bonding request for the nine-county...
Oh, yes.
The nine-county solid waste project. Steve, I know that you've met with the group of people that are bringing that forward, and I know we don't have a bill number on that yet. And then there is also supposed to be a first reading, and I haven't seen the bill number on the changes related to how tax forfeited land is handled, but that has a significant impact on Hubbard County and any other counties that are managing significant amounts of acres for timber, notwithstanding the requirement to comply with, with the Supreme Court case from last year for things going forward, but how are we, what's the lookback look like? How are those handled? How much are counties liable for following the rules up to this point? So, those are two big things that are really gonna have a significant impact on our local levy.
And adding to that, Steve, you know, just take as an example, something that was tax forfeited twenty or thirty years ago, and we've been managing timber on it all these years, I mean, how far back does this go?
Well, right now, I don't think that there is a limit, and that's one of the issues with it. You know, the, it's like anything else, you get one extreme case, and all of a sudden, somebody wants to rush in and cure the problem, and I think that's what happened. You're talking about the, the case down here with the lady.
Tyler versus Hannipan County.
Yep, and, and so that was wrong, what they did was wrong. But at the same time, I don't know how you go back a hundred years, because I think a lot of your lands probably were in place during the nineteen thirties when the, when there was the big, big crash, and everybody lost their land. So, what they're gonna do there, I don't know.
My understanding with the conversation with our county attorney and the County Attorneys Association is that the intent is to bring these back to the point in time when those cases were filed. So that's approximately twenty sixteen for most of the state, and twenty twelve for Hannipan County, because that's when Tyler was filed. So, there is some amount of limit on this, there is some language in this, there are some components that if, if, if a, if a home forfeits now going forward, and it's, and the tax forfeiture process is different than it has been, because the way it had been had been found to be, you know, not, not constitutionally acceptable, that's fine, but the issue is, for us, is how far is the lookback? What do they do with the fact, and right now, because this has been opened up, I know you've seen this, Steve, there's gotta be dozens of bills out there that are saying that we want a piece of the, of the profits of that, so people are asking for that. Right now, the management of timber... uh is allocated to the county, to the schools and to the local taxing jurisdictions, right? And if somebody, somebody comes in and says, well, we're gonna take a piece of that money or we're gonna capture that for this use or that use, that, that directly affects all of our taxpayers. Um, there's gotta be an incentive for the counties that manage large tracts of, of, of timber. Potlatch didn't wanna do it. That's why they let the stuff go. Uh, and if there's no incentive for us to do it, then, then we likely won't do it, which means there won't be any timber management in the state, which will not be good for anybody. So this is a, I, I wish that we had seen this language yet. I'm, I'm, I understand it's supposed to have a hearing on Thursday and nobody's seen language for it and that kinda concerns me. The other big one that uh, the Department of Revenue says it's not coming up this year, but the way that this thing is moving is scaring the heck out of me. And you've heard from Marshall County and some other counties, Clearwater, um, whether or not uh, the, the Department of Revenue is gonna change the way that they um assess and bill state-assessed utilities. Right now, they, we just got it all settled and, and their first reading and first proposal um creates a significant tax shift away from state-assessed utilities right back to residential parcels. So I don't know if that's gonna come up legislative this year or if they're I don't know where it came from, but it kinda came out of the blue and those two things, tax forfeit, the way tax forfeited is handled and the way state assessed is handled in Marshall County, state-assessed utilities are fifty percent of their levy. Uh, here it's twenty percent of our levy. Um, it's a significant number, so those are the things that are gonna have direct impact on, on the cost of living here in Hubbard County.
Speak to Jeff, to speak to how the there's been like a fifteen percent decline in state utility assessment. It's been shifted already to residential property owners. Over how many years?
Yeah, the la- if you look at the last twenty years, you can see a, you can see a tax shift by um, by category. And um, and the tax shift is the, the rate on state-assessed and the rate on commercial and industrial has gone, gone down and the rate on residential has gone up. That's just looking at ten years worth of, of tax history. So this would be another five percent shift from, away from state-assessed to, to residential. And I don't know, I don't know that people are aware that that's what's happened. I don't, I don't think homeowners would be in favor of giving breaks to utilities. You know, if there's an amount of money that has to be paid for taxes, then, then there's a, probably an equitable way for it to be split out. And putting more and more of that on homeowners is not probably the way to do it.
Steve, we wanna be respectful. We know that you said you had till nine-thirty, so we thank you for your work and thank you for meeting with us today.
Well, thanks. I, I appreciate it and I'll uh, you know, I'll stay on these bills and I'll look into the stuff Jeff's talking about. Honestly, I've been so swamped. I haven't even kept up on the Department of Revenue stuff. Uh, I, I heard about it a while ago and and it's kinda not been at the top of my list, so I'll get that back up there and look at that. And then hopefully one day I can just come in and sit there for a while with you because the time is short, but appreciate your time.
Thank you, Steve. Okay.
So that was the only reason we had a Zoom meeting, so I'm going to um end that for everybody.
Eric, do you wanna come up in the meantime?
Sure.
And then we can discuss the legislative topics also at the end to see if there's anything else we wanna move forward. Are you ready, Jeff?
Yep.
So I had asked Eric after um what happened at the campground, the CUP application on the small lake, I asked Eric to look into this. I think we've all read it. Eric, if you wanna just give us a synopsis, go ahead.
Sure, so I was asked to visit with the board this morning about uh our PUD language and the shoreline management ordinance and explore options for different ways of going about regulating things. PUDs in general make up a small percentage of the overall shoreline within the county, so I think that is good context to keep in mind as we evaluate uh options for addressing them with the other regulations. Uh, we could look at reclassifying certain lakes uh that would need state approval. They've got criteria that they used to assign the initial lake classifications. So whether they would be open to changing a classification to something more restrictive, I couldn't say. The one downside to doing that is you then make all of the existing development non-conforming uh like lot sizes. If you went from a recreational development lake class on a lake to a natural environment lake class, then you now make all those lots non-conforming in terms of lot size. You also would make the structures more than likely non-conforming in terms of lake setback because you'd move from a hundred-foot setback to a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, so there's definite trade-offs uh to looking at being able to regulate PUDs more strictly by changing the lake class. Uh, it has a lot of other effects on other property owners.
But then the existing property owners basically have to come for a variance whenever they wanted to do something?
You'd wind up with a large number of variance requests that you'd have to process, yes.
That's what I was kinda getting out of that, thank you.
Yep, yep.
So in our quest to, to solve a specific problem, we would create a whole bunch of new ones. So reclassifying, I don't think is a really good option to do it unless it, unless you really know the consequences of what that outcome's gonna be because this would create a ton of new parts. Make life more miserable.
And more expensive.
Another option kind of along that line would be you could look at developing what are called land use districts around uh individual lakes. So you could say, here's a sensitive bay, we're gonna create a more restrictive uh land use district to protect that bay. As opposed to the rest of the lake, you might have a lesser uh restrictive set of standards for that. Again, you kinda run into the same likelihood of creating a number of non-conformities just due to the fact that most of the shoreline property in the county is developed uh to some degree. So I don't, uh, I guess I would not recommend looking at either of those myself. The uh ordinance already has some things in it that are more restrictive than the state standards. So as uh that most recent campground that the county dealt with uh is an example of this. Uh, they, when we did the dwelling unit density calculations, we're allowed a number of units that were higher than what they could actually place on the property due to the limiting factors of impervious surface percentage and open space percentage requirements. So those two things actually caused them to have to lower the number of units that they could have uh as opposed to what the dwelling unit density calculations would have allowed them to put on the property. So we do have some things in place that already kind of act as safeguards against things getting too carried away. You can always have certain proposals just with uh unique characteristics of the property or the type of structures that they're looking to place on the property that can sometimes lead to unintended consequences. So I've dealt with that with resorts over the years where they'll ask if, can we make these cabins a little bigger at a few hundred square feet each of them and interestingly, the way the dwelling unit density formula in the ordinance works, it can actually lead to allowing them to have more larger structures uh on the same piece of property than if they were to make them smaller. So it's kind of an odd uh way that it works, but uh that can catch us sometimes. Currently with PUDs, most of them that we see are on recreational development lakes. Uh, we only have one general development lake classification in the county. That's on Cavacona Bay. That's the only GD lake class that we have and a GD lake is the least restrictive of the classifications. So most of what we see is recreational development. Uh, we don't see many PUDs on natural environment lake classes just because as far as the dwelling unit density they're allowed, it's essentially half of what you can have on a recreational development lake and it just isn't really economically feasible for somebody to develop a campground, for example, on a natural environment lake. And I think the, the profit margin even on recreational development lakes is getting tighter uh than it used to be. We could uh look at uh, or I guess it's been talked or asked, the question's been asked of could we look at various lake attributes like lake size as an example, as a way of getting at within a classification, making things more restrictive on a smaller lake within a given classification than on a larger lake. Uh, you could do that. Then the question is how, how do you go about that? How do you create a formula? Do you say lakes within this acreage range have these sets of standards? Lakes within this acreage range have a different set of standards and where do you draw the line? Uh, how many different categories do you make? Those would all be things that we'd have to work through. And you'd wanna make sure in doing that, um, you could create some non-conformities as well because we do have existing PUDs out there uh that were approved under the current standards. So if you, yeah, I guess there's different ways of skinning that cat. You could take the current standards and apply those to the largest recreational development lakes and then make them more restrictive on the smaller ones. The caution would be that you wouldn't wanna, you'd wanna make sure that the smallest lakes in the RD class wouldn't be more intensely regulated than what you could place on a natural environment lake. So I don't know, but there's a whole lot of elbow room in which to, to work to potentially go about it that way. Uh, let's see here.
Plus, I don't think you would have, as you, as you had mentioned to me before, the, if you wanted to go down this route of lake size, you probably would drill in more than just lake size. You would be looking at, as you said, other characteristics like, well, who's who's gonna, what resources are we gonna use to collect all that data to find this out and determine all of this thing? And um like you said, it's a slippery slope because you're trying to thread the needle between two, two lake classifications already. How much, how much are you gonna gain by doing all this work? I don't think it's really gonna affect you much. I think your best tool is the CUP process. That's kinda what it's there for, is to do exactly what it did. You have your guardrails with your ordinance for each lake classification and then you have you know there's things where it doesn't fit neatly into there and you have your CUP process that you can qualify for and apply for and then uh you go through that process to help solve these problems. Which is exactly the way it ended up.
We scaled down the docks.
Yeah. So you have, you have, the more you tighten the ordinance up, the more you're gonna tighten the CUP process up and everything and that can work in your favor or that can work against you. It just depends. You want some latitude there to do what's right so you can, you know, maybe the property owner wants this and the county doesn't want this and you can, you know, trade some things to, to make it better on the lake and if you tighten this up too much, you're kinda shackling yourself.
I have one question of um, what, what value do you place in the, in the environmental assessment worksheet? Just because that would lead to a question is can uh maybe one possible solution would be for a smaller lake to have a lower threshold for triggering an EAW?
That's uh, the A W thresholds are in state rule, so we don't have any-
Can't get tighter than that like we can with some other things in the ordinance?
No, that's a, that's just a state rule, so it's not something that the counties can choose to adopt, something that's more restrictive to deal with environmental review issues, so uh we're kind of I wouldn't say stuck, but we have to operate with what the state has set for those thresholds.
And you know, and going back to that campground thing, you know, so much of what the residents were asking for and stuff, we had no authority to, to do. So when we went through that CUP process, we ended up converging on what we actually had authority to do and then made those adjustments based on lake size and the input we got from the public, so you know, again, some of these things that they, they'd like to see us do, we don't have authority to do. It's not in our lane.
And going along with what Dave said, you know, I, I actually was shocked at how little of the DNR weighs in and so that was one of the reasons I had asked Eric to look into this. Cause you're right, we, there were a lot of things that were asked of us, but we had no authority over.
Yeah, we can't, when you said do, we can't regulate the environmental review. We can't regulate watercraft use on the lake. We can't do a lot of the things they were suggesting, but we could control how many bolt slips there were.
And I guess uh, just thought of something, Tom, to your question. Uh, there is the ability for the county board to order a discretionary environmental review on projects where you feel that that would be uh appropriate to do, so while you can't lower the threshold that would trigger that, you could say project A doesn't meet the state's minimum uh requirements, but you could still say we wanna go through that process 'cause we feel the project has enough uh environmental concerns that we wanna do that. I, I can say the EAW worksheet really doesn't give us a whole lot of information that we don't already gather through a regular conditional use permit application, so it tends to be kind of a redundancy and just adds several months to the process.
Well, that's why I asked, also asked with the question, I mean, what value do you place on that, on the EAW?
I'd, I'd love to see it go away myself. It's, it's a pain in the rear administratively and it tends to give people the wrong impressions and hopes that they can somehow use it to cause a project to not go forward and that isn't the case.
Who would conduct that outside of your office, an independent contractor or would your office conduct that?
We have historically, uh, 'cause we haven't had any projects that were large enough in scale to warrant outside consultant help, but you can uh enlist a consultant services if you want to. Yeah, we can regulate uh watercraft slips. We could become more restrictive on those if we wanted to. The rub there would be not making it so tight that then you uh discourage folks from ever wanting to create PUDs and then you lose that economic aspect of stimulus to the economy uh with people having a place that they can stay.
And I don't know that putting an arbitrary number on it that you think is correct is going to work very well in all situations. That, that's the whole thing for me when I kinda revisited this after the last CUP was, you know, it'd be difficult if not impossible to come up with shoreline management ordinance changes in this area uh that would fit appropriately in all situations. And so by trying to do so, we, again, we may ma- make it harder. The CU pro- CUP process I think is the best way to address these concerns, 'cause you can put those conditions on and you can take a look at lake size and lake shore type and stuff. That, that's all can be handled in the CUP process, which again is exactly where it ended up this last one.
Yeah, I thought it worked.
I think we landed in the right spot.
It worked very well and it was very well vetted, I thought. I'm personally fine with the ordinance the way it is.
One other thing I should note that is in my uh report is that we in our ordinance do not have the density multiplier that is allowed in the state shoreline rules, uh, so that would uh is a component that would allow even a greater density of, of dwellings to be placed in a PUD if certain criteria are met and we do not have that in our ordinance, so we actually allow a lesser density than a lot of counties do that have that multiplier in their ordinances. The one thing that we could look at would be if there were be an incentive approach uh that we could offer The one thing that we could look at would be if there will be an incentive approach uh, that we could offer of saying, okay, you're allowed a greater number of slips or you're allowed, I don't know what it would be. Increased density in exchange for we want more of the shore impact zone, put back in the natural vegetation. If it's, you know, a wide open lawn, um, things of that sort, um, would be possibilities that we could explore. There, you kind of have to try to figure out where the sweet spot is of gaining some additional protection of the resource. But not having that be, or having the the landowner see that as kind of a win-win. Of they get something in return and then the county gets uh, something as well. So it's dialing in what's the, what's the uh, trade-off that people would find uh, acceptable.
Isn't that already kind of done in the CUP process? I remember Ken specifically bringing up, you know, allowing some things on the shoreline in exchange for less slips.
I've even seen that done in the variance process, a little exchange here and there.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can certainly continue to do it that way as well of uh, case by case.
Which again, I'll go back, that's where I think it belongs, is case by case.
Yeah, no, they're all different. There's not two that are identical, different circumstances with with each request.
I mean, it gets to be quite a process, but I don't know how you do it more effectively, any differently than the way we did.
Anything else for Eric? I appreciate you taking the time to do this, Eric. And it's good to have board discussion on this.
Yeah, I think it provides some clarity, you know, after going through that. You know, you can, you can see potential pitfalls along the way, you know, but if, if, if the if the planning commission and the board do their work and really dig into it and look at it. I think you'll, the CUP, CUP process is a good way to end up in the right spot.
So Eric, I had this question from a member of the public. So um, just for the public purposes, I think I gave the right answer. I'll have you address it. The person was wondering if we ever looked at the economic, um, with the, whatever the entity is, in this case, the campground, whether they could make it financially or not. And I answered that you look at the shoreline ordinance and what's involved there. And the financial aspect is between the landowner and the banker or whatever, whoever it is. But we don't take that into consideration. Is that correct?
Yeah, normally it doesn't come up and isn't a consideration, I suppose there. There could be a circumstance where that would factor in if they were looking at doing something that would severely change the look and feel of the property. And if it didn't happen, you could have exposed soil, um, you know, on a steep slope or a bluff that could potentially then wash into the lake. Um, so then you might want to look at it, but even if you did, I don't know, you know, things can happen. Even if somebody's got all their resources and plenty in the bank and, you know, it doesn't stop the piano from falling out of the fifteen stories you walk underneath and uh, stuff can happen that's beyond the landowner's control too, so.
I think the con of using economics as a thing too, is if I came in as a property owner and said, well, I'd like to do this on my property and doesn't fit the ordinance, but economically it's half as much, so you should allow me to do it. Well, that doesn't mean it's right. So you, you can't, you can't have the county looking at economics and then not allow the homeowner to use economics.
But couldn't the county uh, require a bond placed on the CUP development in case they were to fail? And got this big mess that's gotta be cleaned up?
The only time they could require a bond is if we own the property. I, I believe legally we could require a bron- bond on development if we own the property and had a development agreement. I don't think we have a way to require that on private property that we're not in ownership of.
Now, somebody built something and uh, partway through and environmental damage occurred. Obviously they'd be liable for the potential environmental damage, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody got into this situation where they couldn't continue to completion with their project and it's exposed and it's a concern for us, I mean, yeah, we could certainly, if there were violations of the ordinance created, we could send them letters. But there realistically, if they can't make their project happen, they probably don't have the funds to correct what they did, uh, you know, already start. So that's the reality unfortunately that you run into if somebody gets in the financial straits.
But there again, if it's, if it's a transaction between two private parties, whoever would purchase, say it went back into foreclosure, whatever, whoever would purchase the property then would be liable. But the county, that's not an area the county gets involved in.
No, I mean, we've seen plenty of residential properties where somebody starts building their dream home and then it never gets finished and it gets into disrepair and becomes a hazard. So it can happen to anything or even a completely finished home, you know. Mom and dad loo- die, the property goes into the kids' hands, the kids live out of state. They don't get here to maintain it and keep it up and then it starts to get rundown in that situation too. So I don't know that we want to get into telling or making a determination as to when something is viable or what's enough resources to do a project or not and use that as grounds for saying no.
Anything else for Eric? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the consensus is to leave it as is. Would you agree?
I would.
Yeah, in a sense, it's not a, it's not the, it's not a perfect process, but the process works.
Yeah, and with the, with the CUP process, as long as the board and the planning commission have well reasoned facts and the record shows that it was well vetted. If somebody were ever to appeal that decision to the courts, uh, the courts are gonna give a lot of deference to the decision made by the board, as long as they can see that there's in the record good reasons why, uh, whatever the decision was uh, that was made, so.
I can add in one quick comment. Do you remember, well, maybe a year or so back, we were wondering to give this authority, CUP, complete authority to the planning commission? This is an example of one of those where I thought it would be best to have another layer. I mean, you don't need it in all of them, but this is one show that it was good to have another layer.
All right, thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
Jeff, do you want to lead the discussion on the TFL parcels?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, there's a, there's a bunch to unpack in here. What I'm gonna start with is, is start by showing uh, a GIS map of the space. Obviously northeast Hubbard County, Allen Farden Township that we're having a conversation about now. And there are three areas that we've identified as potential for development. One is this section north of US Highway Two, where there's already, already residential development. And there are tax forfeited parcels in this in this area. Um, the four that are right here are right along this existing three hundred and seventh avenue. And they'd be relatively easy to uh, plat and make available for sale and development. We've had conversations with some realtors and some people who think that there's an interest in um, building in this area. And, you know, the proximity from here to um, Cass Lake is five miles and Bemidji is six or seven miles. Um, there's an opportunity to make this happen pretty quickly.
Jeff, can you, what is that kind of purplish on the map?
Oh, thanks for asking.
With the terrain there.
Yep, so um, I wanna exit out of this. So these uh, purple green things are all wetlands.
Okay.
So they're wetland areas. Um, I'm also showing the shoreline development area on this portion of the map. It gets a little busy, but I, I think it's important to see. I would say that this forty is not necessarily that good for development, except the pieces right along the road probably are, right? So um, but after, after going through what we think we're gonna propose, uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, about the process of converting tax forfeited land to land that's available for sale. You guys know a little bit about that, but.
So a quick question on that parcel, because you know, developments within cities now often have green space. Would that be conducive to, if a developer wanted to put a walking path along that area?
Possibly. I, it wouldn't, where would it go? It wouldn't connect to anything else, so.
Right, but at least it would be somewhere that people could get out. Okay.
The, these um, these parcels are outside the shoreline um, impact zone. Farden does not have uh, zoning of their own, which means that we're at ninety-eight thousand square feet for a lot, which is two and a quarter acres. So these are gonna be pretty low density, um, you know, private parcels, private well, private septic. Is, is how they'd have to be developed. There is, um, there are also tax forfeited parcels along the west side of Midge Lake that are uh, potential for development. And I've walked this myself and the, and the, the land is um, relatively flat, relatively. I, I don't know if you know the area, but it's probably about a five or ten foot drop down to the lake. It's, it's, it's nice shoreline. It's a shallow lake, but it is a recreational development lake. Um, and there's an opportunity to develop housing in here as well. This is all privately owned, but this road, Water Lily Trail is basically a snowmobile path that feeds through there um, at some point in time. If that were to ever to be developed, um, road, a road would have to, would be a good thing to have consideration about. And I'm sure that the people down here would really appreciate having more of a road than a snowmobile trail. These are all seasonal spots.
How many lots could you get on the tax forfeited land there?
Um, well, within, within shoreline, we only had, we need eighty thousand or forty thousand. So we can actually be a little more, uh, a little more dense on the front lots. I think you need a hundred and fifty foot of frontage. Um, so there's actually room for quite a number of, of parcels along here. I think there's probably as much in, in these three parcels as there are in the four up above.
Okay.
Because the density limits are, are less, or you're allowed to be more dense um, development. So those are um, some of the housing opportunities. The other opportunity we're having a conversation about is some industrial development. And this is US Highway Two. This is five hundred street that comes down and goes right in front of um, the township. There's a cemetery here and then the township facilities here and a park, recreation area. Ideally, we wanted to do this right here by the, by the um, railroad track and the highway. Um, but this line is the line of the reservation. So this first um, half mile of, of the, of the county is in Leech Lake Reservation. And that becomes, becomes potentially problematic. Now, these two parcels are actually owned indeed by the county. So they're available, but they're completely forested. They're probably not the ideal place to do that. These three parcels stacked here are also tax forfeited and not on the reservation. But from conversations with Deed and with Mankota, what we're hearing is, is that there's a need for larger parcels. And the way to get to larger parcels is to go a little bit further west. There are four contiguous forties here. Another forty here. These three are in private ownership. And then um, these two forties that straddle the, the um, rail corridor. So there's two hundred, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty developable acres um, in this one section that is two to three miles off of US Highway Two. And what we're, we're, we're finding is, is that there's interest. We're having conversations. We have not nailed anything down. But to get to the point of actually being competitive and being able to, to, to recruit or market to an investor essentially means at some point having something shovel ready. So what we're, what we're proposing, and this is kind of ahead of the conversation about creating an economic development authority. We'll need, we'll need that to manage these um, these areas. But what we're recommending is, is that we do some background work to make sure that these are developable in the way that we're, and we're identifying as we're looking at a map, as we're looking at the plat book. As I've been, I've driven through this, um, through this area. I intend to drive through the area up north for, for housing. I've driven through the stuff on the, on the west side of Midge Lake. And just take a look at that, but what we're, what we're talking about is needing to get some survey work done. You can see a lot of rail corridor through here, old pipeline going through here, utilities through here. We need somebody to actually give us an opinion on what limits there are to development, what opportunities we have to cross from north to south across that rail corridor. How we would, how we would build that and, and uh, respect the easements and the, and the property rights that are, like this little piece right here is. See, there's US West has got a little bit in here and then we've got um, we've got Sioux Line Railroad has some property in through there, so we have to be, be cautious of all of that.
Jeff, where's hi- how far is Highway seventy-one from here?
Seventy-one is about six miles.
Okay.
So here's seventy-one. Oh, yeah, you don't want all those layers on when you're, when you zoom in that far, or zoom out that far. If I turn off shoreline and wetland.
So if, if we developed or got this land ready for development for industry?
Yep.
Would that eventually, so in my mind, I kind of connect everything where Bemidji Steel is, because that's just the point to me. Is there land in between where Bemidji Steel is and then where this development is to do a whole industrial park eventually? Or is that in private ownership?
It's, it's largely in private ownership. Um, the largest area where we have an opportunity to consolidate, I, I mean, ideally, we'd like to work with this. But the private owners of this are not being realistic about what the value of that is.
Okay.
Um, ideally, we'd like to be here. So the only reason we ended up over here is we realized there's tax forfeited property here.
Right.
Then we realized that that is in um, in Leech Lake Reservation. So we're, we're looking over here as being um, a comparable large space. So we would have two hundred plus acres and then the access and, and the, the access to rail and the access to gas and, and electric in there. There are significant connectivity. You know, this County Road Nine runs all the way over here to seventy-one. Which is the corner where uh, Bemidji Steel is, but that's eight miles? I mean, we're, we're pretty far, we're pretty far east when we're over against the, uh, against the border. Um, there's also the likelihood that um, one or more of the, of the companies that are interested in developing either up here adjacent to Potlatch or in this area, would be interested in some of the byproducts of our proposed solid, our demo, demo waste landfill. So we've got thirty-six to nine, we've got, we've got relatively good roads to get there without using seventy-one and two to, to get, to get there. Um, there's a lot of confluence here with the people that want to be, uh, that want to be developing out here. We have significant tax advantages. Our local tax rate is great um, compared to the surrounding counties. The fact that Hubbard County is a hub. Um the fact that Hubbard County is a hub zone, which means that development, they have preferential contract um opportunities with federal government. That's why Bemidji Steel moved from Beltrami to Hubbard County, um because we're a hub zone. Other people know that, that are um making significant investments. So that's um that's kind of generally what this looks like. I I've reached out, uh sent an email to the clerk up in Farden Township and asked if Commissioner Van Kempin and I could go up there and talk to the supervisors. I've not gotten a response back from that. I don't know if you've heard anything or.
I talked to Tim Humphrey uh last week.
Okay.
And he said that, of course, tonight is the annual township meeting, so it's a reminder to everybody.
Yeah.
And um Tim says that normally they'll have their regular board meeting start at six.
Okay.
And I told him that I would probably show up. I said, I didn't know if you would or not. I mean, since we haven't gotten a response back.
I I'm not planning on it tonight, so.
I thought I would just kinda touch base and tell them that kind of broad, you know, brushstrokes of what we have kinda.
Broad brushstrokes if if, you know, if we talked about, if we have an opportunity to develop that industrial, that means we have to build up Five Hundred Street, um that we'd probably have to work with the township um on that. Um it very likely that that could become a county road, not a Kasaw Road. Uh as I was talking with our assistant county engineer, he's saying if we just make that a county road, we can probably make that, bring that up to that standard uh cheaper than if we make it a Kasaw Road, because it'll come up with some some contingencies. And it's about, it's a three-mile-long driveway that we would need to provide access um back into those parcels and. Anyway, yeah, I think in general you could talk about that specifically if they have questions. Um one of these developments would offset the cost of that Cass County School or Cass Lake School District in uh in in that township, so.
And what I like about this too is, and I think I've expressed this before, it's, there's a couple of things that I think are unique to Hubbard County uh in this area is that we've got a four-lane US highway that we don't have anywhere else in Hubbard County and a railroad grade. I don't know if there's a railroad grade. I I I would, you know, driving, I'm trying to think, do I go across railroad tracks? And I know, you know, the the bike trail used to be a railroad grade, but I can't think of any others unless they're south of Park Rapids or something, but so anyhow, like I said, I think there's a couple of things that are unique to Hubbard County. With tax forfeited land right there um versus having to buy some private property or something like that, it 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 just seems like a a great opportunity for for Hubbard County.
So there's there's a process relative to to converting tax forfeited land. Um and my my inclination would be at some point, um I just had, I just got a um a note from uh Lauren downstairs uh about when these parcels forfeited. Most of them forfeited in the thirties and the forties. Relative to, you know, pending legislation. I'm not entirely sure how urgent we need to do this or we don't need to do this, but I'm I'm kinda showing a couple of provisions and the timing of them might be different. Obviously, if we we currently have the opportunity to withhold, offer something for sale, and then ask that it be withheld for sale. Um if it's housing, there's an opportunity that we that that a development, EDA, HRA, whatever, could 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 get them for less than market price. Unless it's intended to be market rate housing, then they probably have to purchase it at at the same price that anybody else would would be able to. Um so you'll see that I'm I'm showing, and when we get to the five-year plan, I'm showing some moves to get to the point of doing this pre-development work, some of the engineering, some of the survey, allocating some money to um purchase some of these parcels. Um and the timing of it is really the is really the the thing that that comes into into play.
Well, one one thing, one of the complaints has been Hubbard County hasn't gotten outside of kind of this hub to do work, but whenever we've looked to go up to the northern part, we've never been able to figure out what we could do. And this would give a wonderful opportunity to develop things in the northern part of the county.
And it's and we're just starting. I know that I I tell people, and I've said this before, government takes time. And this is something we'll start now and something could happen right away, but most likely it's gonna be years down the road, but.
It's it's one of those things where when it happens, it'll be obvious.
Yeah.
Um and and in my conversation and Mary's conversations with Deed and Mankota Power, and these are the people that are brokering these big these big developments right now. Um people are contacting them and saying, where can we get eighty acres? Where can we get a hundred acres? And they can't find it. We have it, and uh what we need to do is some pre-development work. So I think I think generally those are the areas that we're that we're talking about. Um we know the process would be, we would have to work with Cory and 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 uh his land commissioner and create a sale and and pull those parcels from sale and and purchase them if we're if we're gonna go down this road.
If you had an EDA, can't you just convey them to the EDA?
No.
Can't?
No. You still have to convert. Um the EDA can't. In this case, I'd have the county withhold them from the sale. If we had an EDA, the EDA could ask, they'd have the same authority to withhold them from the sale, so they wouldn't go to the county and then. But we're we're, there's a lot of steps here that I'm hoping to get through pretty quickly. So we've got potentially the cost of acquisition. We've got some industrial park planning and development to do. Uh we've got some housing development to do. We have an opportunity to work with HLDC to get a housing study done for the county and then focus on this area, which would really help us know how best to lay this out, what the market is for these and how how we would do that, whether we would do the parcels to the north, which are more residential, or the parcels on the lake, which are more a little higher end. Hopefully, ex- expect a little higher end development there. And I've and I've shown that, I think, I think everybody got a an updated copy of the of the five-year capital plan. There's a couple of pieces in here that are shown as being new in twenty twenty-four, and of course, this is um the timing is negotiable. But I'm showing um additionally, uh three hundred thousand dollars for TFL housing parcels, three hundred for industrial parcels, twenty-five thousand for industrial planning. It's not on this. I didn't print the latest one, but there's um um a bit um on residential planning. There was another twenty-five thousand dollar dollars down there on residential planning. That spends us into a deficit in economic development in twenty-four. But if you look at our capital planning in twenty-four, you can see we have a surplus. So we have the ability to move money from capital to economic development to do that. That's all contingent on the timeline, you know? Um if we move forward with forty or fifty thousand dollars of of engineering and development, survey and planning, um that's not gonna change much scope, and it's obviously necessary before we get to the point of deciding we're gonna purchase. Um so my intention would be next week to come in and ask for the money to do the pre-design and development and the survey work. I don't intend to come next week and say we should put these on sale and have Cory start that process. Uh I honestly think we'll probably let the Economic Development Committee work go through before we get to the point of deciding that. It'll also give us time to get the survey work and the pre-design and the development to find out if this is an appropriate place to put those. I think the housing makes sense because it's just north of where there's already housing, right? So I mean, I think we know the basic soil conditions up there. There's gonna be a place to build. There's gonna be septic sites. There's gonna be all that. Um but the test is really, survey-wise, do we have access that we need to to do the industrial development on those six parcels or not? And are the soils suitable for that kind of development there? I think the answer is still yes. Um the question that somebody asked me is, there's, you know, some rolling hills and some elevation in there. When you look at the topography, there's twenty feet difference between the highest and the lowest point across seven forty-acre parcels. Um that's manageable. It's also it's also all sand.
And I'm sure if we develop the west side there of Midge Lake, that that would be desirable lots.
I I and I really think so as well. I think that's that's an opportunity. So my intention would be probably next week I'll be coming forward and asking for the planning and the survey to get started on the idea of developing up a northern part of county.
The only other thing on the the lots on the west side of Midge Lake, um and you probably know this, there's a road, I guess you could call it a road, that follows a railroad grade and then goes north.
Yeah.
So we'd have a versus going, e- especially if the where the roads uh water water fly trail there or Water Lily Trail starts on private property for the first quarter mile or so there. If that ever became an issue, then like I say, there's that trail that goes along the the whether that's available too, maybe that's part of the uh uh easement, part of the railroad tracks or something too, so.
I'm guessing that trail along the the railroad is the one that would end up being going away before Water Lily. There's out, there's obviously a permanent road easement for that road to go through there. Um and this uh, you know, when you dial in right here, and there's basically a trail that runs through here. It's basically a four-wheeler or a snowmobile trail. It's signed as a snowmobile trail.
Okay.
Um but I've seen people driving on it, and I've and I've been driving on it, so um that's that's probably true. The other.
Well, I was just gonna say, just for informational purposes, we plan to sell this to private developers. We're not gonna actually be putting up businesses or or residential areas. This is to develop to then sell.
So hopefully, the housing study study will inform what we do with that. My my first inclination is is that we purchase it, we plan it, we allow people to buy and and develop lots, right? You know, and if if developer comes in and says, well, I wanna buy the whole forty acres, great.
Yep.
Then we'd have that development agreement that says it's gonna be developed for housing at this type of density. And we have the ability to put those on on the sale. And within a period of time, that that development's gonna commence or it's gonna be returned, right? So um yes, to what extent we get involved, I I think people all saw the notice that um we got the congressional funds to do the infrastructure on the next piece of development north of the Pine Crest Housing. So there um the intent is, and the plan for that money, the application for that money was to put in water and sewer and the infrastructure and the roads and everything so that people can buy those lots and they're ready to build on, right? Um here, we would not be doing the same amount, especially where there already is a road. But if we wanna develop the back portion of those parcels, do we get involved in building a road? Or do we plan it and say, developer, build the road? The housing study will help us know whether there's people, what the needs are, what the development taste is. Um obviously, if we buy those parcels and we sell them for our cost just to get them on the tax rolls as housing, um we're looking at about two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollars per acre to purchase those out of tax forfeiture. We can sell lots pretty cheap, right? So if it's two and a half, it's under ten thousand dollars for a lot for somebody to build, but it's a bare lot. It's a tree lot. There's a lot of work to go into that, right? So we we need the housing study to to inform how far we would develop it.
And the infrastructure that we're who're, you know, the Senate has to pass it, but getting money for, then what that does is people don't have to pay the high specials.
There won't, there won't be specials, yeah.
So when they move in, they'll have property tax, but they won't have the specials on top, which will make housing more affordable.
Yep. Um and then you'll look into twenty twenty-five and you'll see a number for EDA development of five hundred thousand and industrial development of a million dollars. That's a wherever that fits, um that looks like applying for economic, federal economic development dollars at fifty-fifty match um to be able to put in the road, to be able to put in the basic infrastructure, to be able to get back there so that somebody could purchase and use one of those parcels. Where, when that is, that happens sometime down the road. It's uh at this point, that'd be like Deep Lake Park. We probably wouldn't do that until we applied for and successfully got a grant, and then we'd have, know we'd have to match it. So those numbers probably aren't in twenty-five. They probably get pushed out. But they might get pushed forward. If we get somebody that comes in and says, we need eighty acres tomorrow. Um I don't, I think you guys would work with me to find a way to say yes to somebody that wanted to put in a significant investment, even if that meant that we had to do a little maneuvering. This inbridge capacity gives us the opportunity to have a little bit of flexibility here, you know? And so this five-year plan shows setting money aside in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five for economic development. You know, obviously, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, as long as we can, as long as they don't mess up how we're collecting taxes on the state assessed utilities, then we have the ability to to carry that over forward. So generally, that was what I wanted to say about tax forfeited land and the options that are coming up, preparing you for the fact that then next week I'm gonna come in with some actual asks about some pre-development, some some survey, some layout. Um that'll give us the opportunity to tell us if if this is a good, if this is developable property, if it makes sense. If there are easements or right-ofways or anything else that are gonna make this difficult, we'll identify those in that as well. But just kicking off the study so we know that this makes sense. So if we pull the trigger on this, we know that we believe it to be successful.
Any further questions for Jeff? Do you wanna go into the five-year capital plan?
Yeah, and I basically covered that a little bit by tying it into what we're asking for here. Um there are a couple of uh other items that I just wanna mention around that. One is we have been um using our capital for equipment purchases specifically for law enforcement for the first couple of years to try to buy down the need to. The operating costs of law enforcement are not truly reflected when we're using capital to offset their their costs. And I just throw that out there as something that we wanna consider. And we'll, the time to do that would be during budget development for this year. Uh we've already committed to finishing paying off the the third year of the radios out of that fund. But do we wanna get to the point where their operating costs, including capital, um end up staying there, and then we can use our capital dollars relative to projects? Um Deep Lake Park, um this building project over the next couple of years, and then economic development opportunities. Just generally, a philosophical question, do we wanna continue to buy operating capital, uh operating equipment out of the capital fund? And then the last item would be, um we're gonna have a kickoff with elders about the financial management plan. And um and I just wanted to review the the projects and the funds that we're intending to include in the scope of that. Um so the projects would be the current jail and government center project, the Deep Lake Park project. Um and then I, we still show it on the capital plan. The courts and the public safety addition is really out on the end of the five-year, and it's probably beyond the end of the five-year. But my intent would be to leave that project in the modeling in a financial management plan so that we take that into effect. Um if we had one more major capital project, it would it would be that one. And it would be um, you know, a lot of conditions would have to be met before that would make sense relative to working with the courts and making sure that we get some accommodations there and we get that we're working together on what that space would be used for. We have an idea that we need to build a new bus garage, but by the time we get to the point of doing that, we should have funding from the state for the majority of that. We will have capital costs related to solid waste. But solid waste, being an enterprise fund, really needs to be able to be self-sufficient to be able to make that work. So we'll we'll show those along here. Um but the one project is whether we'd ever do a connector between the government center and the law enforcement center for courts, for attorney, for that additional space, and what opportunities that creates to provide connection to the to the uh west side of the old courthouse and provide, you know, I don't know what the scope of that would be. But leaving it out there is something that we would consider long term when we're looking at debt capacities. It may never happen.
Where are we at with the with the planning for the addition to the jail?
Yeah, nothing has changed since the last time we talked. Um we are, we have one item that I wanna bring up about that. Um so thanks for reminding me. It's on my list here, but so that and then relative to the financial management plan, the funds we want planned to study, we plan to study general fund, human service fund, road and bridge fund, um fifty-two, which is solid waste. Uh and then I actually expect that we'll study fifty-five, which is Heritage Living Center, to give us an idea on that. And those are pretty much all of, well, seventy, seventy-one, natural resource management and timber, so.
So if we had any modifications, we're interested in the jail, when would we bring those forward?
I'm sorry?
If there were modifications, any of the board members wish to discuss about the jail, when would we bring those forward?
Uh if you have questions, bring them to me now because they can be incorporated in the current planning. But uh Bruce will be back here before they get, one more time before they go straight into um they're in design development now, before they actually get into plan development, they're gonna be in front of us again. So if you have specific questions about anything to this point, let me know and I'll relay that back to the architects.
I just think there's a cheaper way to house the boats and everything that they're planning on putting in the addition in the garage. I just can't see spending that kind of money for them to have a storage space for boats and a mower and whatever else they have. I can agree with giving them another stall outside of the Sally Port for their command van and their command trailer. But not all of the other things. There's other means we can get by a lot cheaper. Whether we use something out at the highway department to build a pole type structure for them to store their boats and all those things in. Or if it's on the lot where the old water tower used to be, if we have access to that.
Bus garage.
So, I mean, you know, it, it's just, I just can't see spending that kind of money for storage or something that gets used only four months out of the year. I, I just can't see that. I don't think it's a good use of our funds. I'd rather see that money incorporated into the remodel here. I think this is a good idea in the government center. Because it is, it is, it is very clumsy when you go down to, you know, then your third floor, then your second floor, then you're back down to first floor. Somebody can't really just go to the back room and say, hey, you look, I got this question. So I, I would like to see something change there.
I will share that. The only other element relative to that project is if we look at that project from the top and we look to how far we're planning on going to the west or where we currently are with our garage space, there's a house right next to that and there's also a house, um, right next to the driveway going out.
Yep.
And I don't really want to, we, we're not going to talk about price, we're not going to talk about anything else. But I'm going to ask for consensus for the board, um, for us to find a way to make an approach and make an offer potentially to purchase those houses. Had a conversation with, um, with Attorney Frieden. I haven't had a conversation with the developers yet on this project, but it makes all the sense in the world that having that amount of space, um, makes this project a lot easier. And it probably, this project will make those spaces less desirable to live in.
Well, I, I thought the same thing about Hubbard County Abstract. You know, they're just stuck in a corner.
Yep.
You know, is there some way we could capture that property and use that property to expand parking or whatever use it might be deemed necessary?
Well, I've already had a conversation with them and said we're, we're first in line if it ever comes to it, so. But they're, that, that's another issue. So I would work with, um, work with the project, work with the architect. Come up with an, an opportunity to make an approach and simply say, you know, the county's interested. We wouldn't go to the point of going through, um, eminent domain or anything like that. You just, you just don't want the publicity with that. But I wanted, wanted some general consensus that at some point we could develop and, and make an offer. If there's a consensus, what we would end up doing is probably have a closed session at a future meeting where we'd actually talk about price. We get to close meetings to talk about the value of real estate. And I, and I don't want to schedule that without kind of understanding that there is some consensus or flavor to, to think about that. Anyway, I'll work with the architect and, and bring those forward and show why that, how that's beneficial and why that's a problem for the people. If we, if we build the project the way it's designed, it'd be a two-story wall right next to your living room window on one of them. And the other one of them, the intent is, the Sally Port is all the, all the, uh, traffic is going to go out of the north. And when they take off going out of the north, um, it's going to, it might, it might be loud. So we're just, just thinking through that as we were doing the last thing.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Let's look again at the legislative topics we, um, the consensus was for Jeff to get information on the resolution that Hubbard County passed on the White Earth Land. Is there any other of these bills that you want Jeff to look into for a resolution? I think we have a, a resolution given to us from the Dear Management Bill, isn't that correct, Jeff?
Yeah.
Do we want that one brought forward next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
I talked with, um, Jason Kilnowski and Mike Stadansky, who sent the original one. I told them that they were going to be on next week's agenda and they wanted to know what they needed to do. And I said, if you guys could show up, I said, we've already got the resolution and everything. Jason had made the comment that Pete Staubers got a bill going through.
He does.
And they were wondering, he was going to contact the Hunters for Hunters people, the, the main organization, and see if they were changing their verbiage at all on any of the resolution. And I told him that Jeff, and it should have it by next Wednes, by Wednesday tomorrow. To make sure that it gets on next week's agenda.
Okay, good.
Do we want to weigh in on the building code out?
Well, you know, Eric brought that to our attention. He weighed in on wherever he's at, but it certainly wouldn't hurt. Remember they, I think, I think Eric said initially they'd have to fight, hire three with the potential of hiring six people? That's a huge impact to the county.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's moved anywhere yet. It's, it's introduced. Um, I think we.
The Senate file on there, is there?
No, I think we need to make sure that we're following that, but I don't know that that's going anywhere.
Reading it to it sounds, they're talking about municipalities, but then they're talking about cities. So it's like, okay, would, would Park Rapids be required to do it, but not any other city because they're not twenty-five hundred people or more?
Uh, the county would be required to do it. They're just, the, the, the language is simply to remove the exception for municipalities to opt out of enforcing the state building code. And that, um, that would, you know, the twenty-five hundred, so Nevis, Akeley, um, LaPorte wouldn't have to, but the county would. And so that would be the primary cost. The city would, um, yeah, that's, that's one we need to follow up on.
Yeah, the, the only trouble is, you know, if they move, they move quickly. So if we would have to, we'd have to call a special meeting to pass a resolution. But there's not even a Senate bill here to file a resolution on. There is a Senate bill?
There is. It's sent by forty-two oh three.
Okay.
Anyway, what, the, the more important thing is, is to make sure that we work with AMC on that one.
Yeah, because they are working with that.
They are working with that one and make sure that if there's an opportunity for testimony, that we are included in that. And I'm, I'm hammering on these ones that, the tax forfeiture, um, this bill. They definitely hear from me how that's going to affect.
That's good though.
How that's going to affect our operations and, and the, and the costs. So I, I don't know that we need to, I don't know that we need a resolution on everything we want to take a position on.
Okay.
I think we have other methods for most of our.
Point, because AMC is working on that, yeah.
I have a question on the Dear Manager one. I know pop, population of wolves are, are getting high and, and, but I wonder if, if, um, they, when wolves get, if they were to get delisted, does that mean somebody can shoot them anytime they want or is there a management of the deer that wolf herd?
It would allow for management. It would not allow for, yeah, you would, you would not be able to shoot anything out of, out of season.
Not like a coyote or anything like that.
Yeah, because they, you know, don't want to see it go back on the endangered species list, unless they are a native of them, so. Yeah, that's just, I've gotten a couple of emails on that and kind of agreed with what they were saying. Is that, you know, we don't want them to go, you know, become endangered again, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so there'd be like a hunting season for them then? Is that off or a, a direct nuisance that you can see?
They delisted them ten, eleven, twelve years ago. There was a hunting season here in Minnesota. And they think it was, I mean, it was highly successful. As I recall, it was like maybe the first two or three or four days, they'd filled all the tags that were allowed to be filled. So I mean, if, if you've got that kind of a season and you're that successful in that short period of time, that tells me there's a lot of, whether it's wolves or whatever.
Yeah, oh yeah, I believe there's a lot of wolves. I've seen them crossing my lake. Just don't want to see them be endangered again.
Okay, then I, so are we done with that? Thank you, Jeff, for your work on that. And then for board members that brought that forward, I have one other thing. Um, last week I asked board members which NACO, um, committee I should be appointed to. I've been appointed to the Environmental Energy and Land Use Steering Committee. Would it be okay if Jeff put on the cons, the board consensus next week, just to add this to our per diem list?
Will you be traveling somewhere to that?
I have no idea. I'm assuming it's Zoom.
Oh, okay, sure.
Excuse me, somebody was on vacation last week, so I just got the appointment. So I'll find out more. Okay, is there anything else?
Just one last item that I have is, is we're working with, um, with Bruce Kimmel from Ellers to come up with a resolution to authorize the committee to, to, the committee to discuss, um, the establishment of an EDA. And, um, I'll be adding that resolution in a proposed format, um, to the agenda for next week. Bring the resolution forward. And right now it would be, uh, two county commissioners, uh, county HRA representative, city representative, one or two township supervisors, uh, member of Heartland Lakes Development, member of Park Rapids Chamber of Commerce, uh, one or two other, um, business interests from throughout the county. So, and the one that says township supervisor, it could be other city representative, other city representative too. So it's the format of this, uh, the entered, the invitations have not been sent or the interests. I would need you all to help me find people to fill that committee going forward.
What are you trying to get the committee up and running?
Within the next thirty days. Thirty days after next week. Um, I think that it'd be, once it's established, they have sixty days to do their work and make a recommendation. And that, that dovetails with everything else we talked about economic development. If we can get to the point of authorizing, establishing the right scope for an economic development authority, then they can handle these things by the end of, by the end of the year, even though they would still be us. Because we don't have capacity for, for different staff at this point. But, uh, it would mean the authorities are lined up and that they would have the ability to make, uh, applications for those federal grants and et cetera. So this would be, this would be generally the, the make up eleven to fifteen members. We would bring, we would add this list to the item, uh, the resolution authorizing a committee with this type of a structure. And then we just have to reach out, make those invitations and set the schedule.
Is there anything else? All right, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.